All right, I would like to call to order the December 2nd Milford City Council meeting. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper? Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
Do I have a motion to excuse Ms. Cooper?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
That takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the council meeting proceedings from November 18th?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
And financial statements. Do I have a motion to adopt the October 2025 financial report?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
And that takes us to public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, I will move on to the city manager report. Mr. Gunderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Attached in everyone's packet, or provided in everyone's packet, rather, is the city manager report. Pretty, pretty short this week, but I wanted to, if Tara could stand up, she had no idea I was going to introduce her. But I wanted to make sure that everyone on council...
I think she needs to step forward just a second.
Yeah, come to the mic. But a three to five-minute speech would be great, too.
Guess Benjamin's age.
Yeah. Wanted to introduce Tara. She's our new assistant city manager. She started yesterday, so we're excited to have her onboard. She has a wealth of experience and just wanted to make sure everyone on council was aware that, A, she started, was able to be introduced to her, and we're excited to have her part of the team. So she started the week working on the budget. It was 62 degrees yesterday in City Hall. The heat wasn't on, and then we turned on the computers and none of the technology was working. So we said, "Welcome to the big city of Milford." So everything is working now, so we're off to a good start for day two. But I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that she started. I don't know if you have anything... Okay. She likes pickleball and volleyball. She's, yes, very serious. She's offering lessons, and we're excited to have her. So she's been a huge help already.
Good she can find money in the finances to build her pickleball.
Yes, yes, yes. She's gonna be helpful on that. So I just wanted to introduce her.
Welcome.
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 The two other things that I wanted to discuss or bring up was the mural dedication on 11/20. I wasn't able to attend it, but I've been able to drive by it several times, and it just looks so great. I really think that's a great addition to our park, and the lights to be able to show or shine down during the darkness at night has been nice to see. So that's exciting. And then Valley View had a ribbon cutting for their shelter on 11/21 through the Claremont County Chamber of Commerce. Once again, I wasn't able to attend, so I'm not sure if anyone else was there. But Valley View is obviously an excellent asset for the city, and I look forward to continuing to cheer them on from a distance. So, and be a part in any way that I can. So that is all I have, unless there's any questions for me.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to chief bills and the police report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I'm still working on my November monthly report, but I thought it'd be a good time to share some holiday safety tips with the public. So we'll break it down into categories. One, if you're traveling, get automatic timers for your lights. Ask a trusted neighbor to watch your home, pick up your mail, shovel your sidewalks, and occasionally park in your driveway. Probably most importantly, submit a vacation house check request. A vacation house check request through our website or by calling us, so we can keep an extra eye on your residence while you're away. If you're out for the evening, I suggest turning on some lights and a television or radio, so it looks and sounds like someone is home. Be extra cautious about locking doors and windows when you leave, even if it's just for a few minutes. And don't display gifts where they can be seen from outside the house. This is a big one. If you're shopping online, network with neighbors, have packages delivered to work, or leave specific delivery instructions. In the last year, 19% of people have reported having a package stolen. If you're shopping in public, stay alert and be aware of your surroundings. That means putting down your cellphone, smartphone, or tablet. I suggest if you have to look at it, go to the food court or somewhere where you're safe, and you can focus on that and not have to worry about your surroundings as much. We've heard these before. Park in well-lit areas, and be sure to lock your car, close your windows, and hide all gifts and shopping bags inside the trunk. Have your keys with you, ready to enter your vehicle when you approach it. Use your panic button on your key fob if you become nervous or think you're being followed. Lock your doors immediately upon entering your vehicle. This is a big one. Be on the lookout for Milford officers on Operation Holiday Patrol handing out these PetSmart stuffed animals. There's a good chance you'll see us, because we do step-up patrols in the shopping areas around the holidays. And lastly, don't make your vehicle a target by leaving it running with the keys inside. If you must warm it up, use a remote starter and ensure the key fob is a safe distance away. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. All good tips.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe fire does not have a report tonight. So that takes us to council comments. Would anyone on council like to make any comments? I just want to shout out to our service department, because like always on Facebook today, there was like 100 comments of how amazing our roads were, and everything was done quick. So thanks to them for all their hard work.
The city looks so beautiful with the lights and the snow.
And hometown holidays do.
Yes.
Because we had a windstorm that blew leaves all over the freshly cleaned roads, and I know they must have done it in the morning, because it was spotless.
All right. So that takes us to our committee of the whole meeting. Do I have a motion to enter into the committee of the whole meeting?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, so then I'd like to call to order of the committee of the whole meeting. Jackie, will you call the roll?
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
All right, and I will turn things over again to Mr. Gunderson. I think he's gonna do a presentation from the podium. Our first topic is our budget.
All right, can everyone hear me? Pretty, we're good over there? All right. So provided in council's packet was a binder with the updated numbers for the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. I just wanted to run through a very high-level PowerPoint presentation regarding the numbers that are already provided. Similar to the last binder that was sent to council, there's tabs that reflect the order in which we'll be able to go through the presentation. I believe it's tab one is the actual slide deck itself, so you can either follow along on the screen or within the binders itself. So introduction overview, we'll highlight fiscal year 2025 on a high level. We'll roll into fiscal year 2026 on a high level. We'll then roll into the debt summary, capital projects, income tax revenues, and then we'll go into the actual funds themselves. The general fund, capital improvement fund, service department funds, wastewater water, and then conclude. Before we get started, this will be available for residents to see both in person and online. So if you're not able to see it, because I'm blocking you, or you're not here at the meeting, this will be available to view as well. So fiscal year 2025 high-level revenue projections, I've highlighted, we're projecting about an $8.2 million revenue projection in the general fund. Income tax collections are about $5.9 million, and then all funds revenue is $25 million, basically $25.3 million. If you look at the expenses, general fund expenses, we're estimating will be about $9.5 million, with all funds being about $28.5 million. Provided in tab two is my executive summary. I have provided a update on majority of the large capital projects. That includes Five Points Irrigation, that includes the water tower, the UV bulb replacement, or installation, rather, at the wastewater plant, as well as the sand filter media replacement. So I just wanted to be able to highlight that the Wallace Avenue Water Tower project is still moving in the right direction. We're expecting this to be completed in November of '26. So this is certainly a long project. We're to the point now in which we're trying to figure out how we can actually get the water tower up there. So that's an exciting step, I guess. So just as a friendly reminder, that's a $4.6 million total cost project. $3 million of that was a state grant, and $1.6 million of that was financed through OWDA. And I enjoy being able to brag on this simply because I wasn't part of it, but this is a huge, huge deal for the city, not only short-term but long-term. So that was huge. And then you can go down the list. UV bulb replacement currently in engineering starts in early '26. That's a $560,000 total cost project, or total cost for the project. $274,400, so 49% of that total cost was a grant as well. And then we go down, sand filter media, 50% of the way done. We expect that to be completed in '26. And then Five Points, due to health issues with the contractor, that did get pushed to next year. Of the $113,000 total cost, that'll be funded through the grant that was received for Five Points Park. Any questions on that before I go to the next slide? Fiscal year 2026 high-level, we're estimating about $8.3 million in revenue. That's down 0.6%. And then the expenses are about $8.1 million. That is down 19.6%. A lot of that has to do with grants that we are no longer receiving in terms of across all the boards. You'll see a lot of the revenues are down. In terms of the revenues and expenses in the general fund, that is predominantly the trash fund that was moved out of the general fund to the stormwater fund, as well as consolidating the service department and the street construction fund, out of the general fund into solely just the street construction fund. We're estimating income tax to, it's pretty stable, $6 million. It's about a 1.1% increase. And then of the noticeable differences, city hall debt, this was the final year that we had the debt service payment. That was about $151,000. Of the biggest discussion and one of the agenda items tonight is the rate study. We've certainly discussed the rate study several times. We've gone back and forth. We've ran different scenarios. Of course, that affects the budget significantly. So that's something that we'll dive deeper into, but I, that's a big one. And then, of course, the garbage subsidy. Moving that out of the general fund, we subsidized that about $300,000 a year by moving that to the stormwater fund. That reduced that subsidy to about $190,000. So we're able to, and when I say reduced it, all that did was, when you look at the revenues in the stormwater fund, they were outproducing the expenses, so we're able to knock down that impact to the budget. Any questions on that? All righty, moving on, the next tab is our debt table. That is all of the outstanding loans that we currently have. I cut it off to 2030 on the slides. I think I've provided it to 2032 on the, or finance debt, rather. I think 2032. If not, there's an extended table on, not on the slide, but on, if you go to tab, let's see here.
Is it tab three?
Tab three, yes. My apologies, I'm missing the long one. So I think it's 2032.
Yes.
So that shows all the debt. Once again, just wanted to be able to highlight where we stand with the debt that the city currently holds. I think it's also a good reminder to council, not only to see what is actually outstanding, but also to be able to see, you know, by 2029, by 2030, what debt is falling off. And you'll see by 2020, I believe it's eight, 2029, we have a large share of that debt that falls off. So that, you know, is nice to know.
And just the debt, though, for the sports complex, that's actually later on settled out through the hotel tax. And correct me if I'm wrong, that is actually very solvent.
Correct.
So even though that we're showing as a debt, we're actually receiving a little bit more money. So I bring that up, because we get criticized time and time again about that deal that was made, and it has more than paid for itself, continues to pay for itself, and is proven to be very effective. And I just think that that's something that, from the general public, needs to understand, that that whole complex is being funded, so.
Yeah, so if you look behind your debt table, the FC project should be one of the funds that is behind that. So you can actually see, we have a reserve balance, which indicates that we brought in more revenue than the debt service payment. So it has not only paid for itself in terms of the debt service payment, but, and then some. So it has been highly successful, and we look to continue that. Any questions before we move on? All righty. Moving on to the capital projects. On tab four, we have the project list. This has, this is very similar to what was presented previously. There is one thing that I wanted to run past council, and the decision itself is not being made tonight, but it's just, we, as staff, hear what you're saying, and we wanted to throw this out to council to, so we're going down the right path. The very top one is the police cruisers. What I had built in was $190,000. That was for two marked cruisers. The police department has, they're on year four, what next year will be year four of a five-year replacement schedule. And my original push was to do two marked cruisers next year, and that was because that would allow for us to get the replacement schedule completed one year ahead. And that would give us more cruisers on the road that are in good shape, quite frankly, and help with the replacement schedule. After further discussions, if you look at the actual replacement schedule provided by the police department, they have one marked and one unmarked that was planned for this year.
And where is that? Is that in here somewhere?
Is that board of projects?
No, I know the project, but is the list of, is that list you referred, the asset list?
Assets.
Is that provided in here somewhere?
It might, actually, it might not be. I know it was provided last council meeting. Either way, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Where I'm going with this is, after further discussion, we thought that one marked and one unmarked might be the route to go, and that's simply because of the replacement schedule that we've been following. Now, what we've done is we've looked at, and we've heard council say, "What about leasing?" And although we've kind of discussed across the board, not just one vehicle, we thought that this would be a good opportunity to really evaluate that and start that process. Once again, this decision will not be made tonight regardless, so there's still time to gather all the information. But we did a simple calculation. To do one marked cruiser, it's about $93,500. That's just one marked cruiser. That's from purchasing it to upfitting it to getting it on the road. If we leased it, and this would be an unmarked vehicle, that would be, if we leased it, I think it'll save us about $11,000 over three years. To purchase it, of course, it'd be, it's about $54,000, $55,000 to purchase it, and then there's gonna be a couple thousand for like the lights and the radios to make it adequately stocked or what is needed in that vehicle. So regardless, this has to come back to council to be voted on. Whether it's a lease or purchase, it's well above my spending limit. But I just wanted to let council know that we are taking that into consideration. We'll present both options, both purchasing and leasing, and that way you can have the actual figures ahead of you before you make that decision.
And then potentially, you say a lease is how much less?
I think it'll be about $11,000 less.
Over three years.
Over three years. Now...
$11,000 a year, just over the three.
Correct, over three years. So if we were to lease it, I think that, based off of that project number at $190,000 for two marked vehicles, that would reduce it probably about near $40,000. But then, once again, you're spreading it over three years. So it would be a feasible, it would be a good opportunity if it made sense, and that's something we'll consider. Other than that, everything pretty much remains the same. You'll notice there's a couple of, there's two reappropriations, Five Points, as well as the head wall on Milford Parkway. We also have the elevator upgrades at $85,000. We do have a current PO for $35,000, so if we're able to get that done and we carry it over, that will actually reduce it a little bit there as well. So what we tried to do is, and I discussed this last time, is we were creative in terms of being able to come up with money for projects. However, our projects, a lot of these are funded through the department. So when you look at the 2.9, or 2.1 million in projects, a lot of that is within the individual funds. And within the capital improvement fund itself, all the remaining projects that have capital next to the funding source, that's still about $88,000 less than what is in that fund. And why we did that was, we wanted to push enough money to the projects, but also going into next year, we want to come up with a strategic plan or a five-year plan to address some of these capital needs. So to be able to come up with that plan and say, "For the next five years, we want to accomplish these projects," but simultaneously, if there's a need to engineer projects, so for example, State Route 28, when we applied for the sewer lining, we didn't engineer that, and we automatically lose points when it comes to pursuing OPWC, CDBG, et cetera. So this would be a good opportunity to be able to utilize that money for leveraging outside revenue opportunities or funding opportunities or engineering projects.
Couple questions on capital. The Mill and Cleveland storm, that $30,000, that seems relatively low compared to some of the initial, I mean, from years go back, we'd gotten some pretty high estimates. Would that correct in that $30,000, or is that just the, that low area at Mill and Cleveland?
We believe that we can do that in-house, which is why it's that low. And quite frankly, we budgeted that higher than what we believe we can get it done for. To, I forget off the top of my head, but it was almost six figures to, in terms of the engineer's estimate, to outsource it.
Okay.
So we will save quite a bit of money.
And then the new Ford for the dump truck for the street department, is that replacing something, or is that in addition to?
No, that's replacing, and that was the Ford dump truck that was approved in the fiscal year 2025 budget that we kicked to hopefully next year. Any other questions on the projects?
At one point in earlier draft of this, there was a line item for sidewalks on 131 to connect kind of the ridge neighborhoods that are up there. It is not here. I just want to make sure we're still pursuing that for future. Obviously, maybe not next year, because there's a lot of moving parts with how piecemeal that is up there with where township is and whatnot, but that is still kind of on your radar, right?
Yeah, so we've discussed that project with our city engineer. We believe there's a few outside funding opportunities that we can pursue. That would be in coordination or partnership with the township, with the school being there. There's other opportunities that we can apply for other grant funds. So that's where leaving enough room in the budget for excess funds for projects. I think that's one of those opportunities where if we can apply for a grant, we're able to utilize some of those dollars as a local match. That would be an appropriate use. I think it's gonna be very expensive. I also think that the township has a large majority of that territory, which is why I say it has to be a partnership.
Sure.
Nonetheless, I still think there's opportunities there to receive the grant funding needed to complete that project. So yes, it's on the radar. I just simply didn't put it on there, because it needs to be a partnership. Otherwise, we'll only get so far within the city.
Makes sense. Thank you.
The Lime Lagoon, Clay, I know we've gone back before. Did we ever come up, or do you have a schedule? Is this a yearly, bi-yearly? I know we've talked about it quite a bit, but what was the final determination?
It's every other year per, so bi-yearly is what we followed. But with that Lime Lagoon, and I've said this before, but I'm committed to it, we've gotta find an alternative way to clean that.
Right.
Paying the $250,000, we've had quotes from 250 all the way up to 423. So that tells me the trend is not down. We've gotta find a way to clean that out and solve that issue. That is not the path we're on currently. So if it's land applying, if it's whatever that looks like. So we have reached out, Dave Walker's reached out to the Ohio EPA. He's striking out on getting a response back from them, but he's reached out, I think, three or four times to figure out what is exactly needed. We know what's needed, but to get their approval to start pursuing other opportunities. But that, I can assure you, that is one of the things I am very much committed to figuring out, because that is getting totally outrageous in terms of the price. Any other questions? All righty. Moving on, I just wanted to put a graph up there for the income tax revenues. This is, nothing has changed since the previous time you've seen it. Over the last roughly 10 years, we're still averaging about a seven and a half, 7.7% increase on revenue tax collections. However, if you look at the last, basically, three, four years, it's pretty much plateaued. So that's something that we're monitoring, and that's obviously a big revenue source for the city. So we need to continue to find ways to grow, and not only as a city, but also the revenues within that area, because that is such a huge funding source for us. So I just thought I would add that in there. Moving on to the general fund, you'll notice the general fund transfers out is down 45.9%. The income has decreased 0.6%, primarily due to, one, the CRAs that we had to pay out this year, as well as the garbage contract being removed from the general fund. Expenses are down 19.6%. And then I wanted to make sure to emphasize that, once again, we consolidated the service department fund and the street construction fund, as well as the city hall debt that dropped off at $151,000. And that is on tab five within your packet, my apologies. So with what is being budgeted currently, we still left, or we still have about $102,000. That is a difference between revenues and expenses in the general fund. So we could simply leave that as quote-unquote contingency, or we could include that in the transfer to the capital improvement fund if needed for projects. But I wanted to be able to build some sort of buffer in the event that something comes up, or both positive or negatively.
And just because it's such a large jump, the forecast on expenses compared to '24, '25, and then it's still a significant increase. It's a million dollars difference from '24 to '26 in expenses. And those are questions that I think we all get asked. Is that just because the increase in the capital projection of projects? Or where do you quite most of those expenses coming from?
I would say yes. That's definitely a good area to point out. If you look at the next tab, which is the capital improvement fund, what we transferred or completed out of, say, '24 was $319,000. We're now up to $1 million. Last year was $1,700,000, almost $1,800,000. A lot of that has to do with projects that were being completed. One of the easiest ones to point out, for example, is the water tower. We transferred money out for the water tower to pay invoices as they come in. We've restructured that process, so we no longer cash flow that, which is what now we're utilizing next year to fund both water and wastewater as a transfer due to the revenues not competing with the expenses. So I'd say projects are certainly a big area to identify the big differences. Certainly, in '25, we did a lot of large projects. Manalila, we've done, the water tower, like I discussed. There's several projects that we've transferred out additional money for that we won't have next year, which is why there's such a significant decrease. It's not a true, next year, there's not going to be as many grants and whatnot that will be spent down to make that increase or that increase in the expenses. That's significant increase. Any questions on that? All righty, capital improvement fund. So referring back to the project sheet, we also put the capital improvement fund in the binder for council to look over. We've got a transfer of almost $800,000 coming from the general fund with an income tax allocation at, and that's tab six, at $220,000. So that is how we make up our capital improvement fund to complete the projects. Once again, we can increase or decrease that transfer. We've got the $102,000 in the general fund that theoretically could be transferred over if we so chose, but there's still... we so chose. But there's still about an $88,000 difference between projects that are on that list and the money going into that fund. With that, you'll see at the bottom, we've done, it just nets out. So what we are bringing in, we're expecting to go out as well, which is why there's a difference of zero. I do want to point out that last discussion, we had some questions over the five points, and I was just, I didn't have a clear answer as to where the five points grant was. That's in the park fund, which is why that's so high, not in capital improvement. So that was a misunderstanding on my part. So you'll notice our capital improvement fund, next year we'll have a balance of about 85,000, assuming we spend all the dollars that are being transferred in.
Is there any reason why, instead of taking income tax and putting the capital, because we're doing a general fund, wouldn't it not just make as much sense to just have it in the general fund and whatever capital we're going to put into? Because we really don't need, you know, what is it, 3%, or whatever that percentage is?
Four.
Four percent. Theoretically, you could do that, correct?
We can. In fact, that's one of the things that council will have to approve either next meeting or at the beginning of the year. That came up in the audit. We need to establish what percentages go where with the income tax. And it doesn't have to be yearly, but if we did it, you know, this is a one-year, we're going to allocate it, you know, this way, then we need to pass that by ordinance. So that will be something we have to address. In terms of going into the capital improvement fund, I don't disagree. I mean, that's a council decision, obviously, but it makes no difference. I either just increase the transfer and that better aligns with the projects that are being taken out of that fund. I mean, 220,000 isn't going to get us anything for projects. So if we took that out and just transferred out of the general fund, and that's what council wanted, it really makes no difference on our end.
Wouldn't it give you the opportunity so that we're looking at capital, we're going to the budget next year? We know, you know, what our fund balance is, but we really don't need that 220 already sitting in there. It could be in the general fund, and then we would fund it into whatever capital improvement projects you wanted, correct?
Correct. I mean, I view the general fund in some respects being a checking account. When it comes to some of these other funds, you know, we transfer out of those to support other areas. It's no different than your personal finances. You know, you're taking out of your checking or saving, I guess, but, you know, and transferring your investments. To me, it's the same thing.
And I think from council, years ago, that was the only money that went in there. And, you know, whatever we had in the capital improvement fund, that was what you had to spend on capital. But obviously, by doing these large transfers now, we're funding much larger projects than they ever did in the past. So again, I just think it's something that maybe we could probably streamline or make more efficient, because obviously, once you put it in there, it stays in there. Yeah, right?
Yeah, the only thing I'll throw out there is if council felt differently, and we did pass the budget, as long as we're not making that transfer, and we make that change, say, at the start of the year, there's no harm or foul there. No harm nor foul. Whatever the proper way to say it. Questions? All righty. So moving on to the service department tabs. First, we'll start with the street construction fund. I want to, once again, emphasize, I know, looking at the document, you're specifically the wages, you know, it basically doubled. And once again, this comes from consolidating both the service department and the street construction fund. Why we did that was because it's the same funds, it's the same people operating the same duties, or completing the same duties. So to have two separate funds didn't make a lot of sense to me. Why it was two separate funds was because the gasoline tax and the vehicle registration fee cannot be sent to the general fund. So it has to remain outside. So that's why this is no longer part of the general fund. It's part of the street construction fund. However, similar to the capital improvement fund, this is certainly very much subsidized by the general fund. The fund transfer, we have down about 10%. Street resurfacing, we have 267,000. This year, we spent about 198,000. We signed a contract for 205, and that was to repave State Route 28, where we had the debacle earlier this year with the sewer and water. But in terms of pure street repaving, it was 198,000. We budgeted 300. We needed to utilize some of that money to pay for the large fixes on State Route 28, which is why we significantly reduced it. So we do have 267,000 built in for next year. On that project list, we have seal coating. If you go back to tab four, we've got 17,000 allocated for seal coating. That's built into that. So it's about 250,000 for street resurfacing. So it's still a little bit more. I hope we continue to trend upwards, but we do have some large capital outlay items that are in that fund, which is why we had to knock it down a little bit less than last, or what was originally budgeted this year.
Is that based on us going into a contract with the county again? Is that the?
I'll tell you, I am totally on board with that. Based off of my experience, it not only spreads the cost, it makes it more affordable, but the contingency alone was a heck of a lot less. So I'm totally on board with that.
And then do we have, just for council's information, the list of what that, those streets would be, or, because that's another question I get asked a lot, hey, when's my street, you know?
Yeah. So what I'll put in, I'll draft an email to council. We do have lists or streets identified. We don't have the prices, but we do have the streets identified. Wallace Avenue, obviously, being one of the streets that we need to address. However, if they're bringing stuff up in October or November of next year, we're going to have to tiptoe around that and figure out what makes the most sense. But the service department has identified a list, once again, with no prices. So it's just, these are the list of roads based off of the pavement study that was completed in '22, I think it was. Maybe you would know better. I think it's '22. It was in the 2000s. All righty. Parks Department, revenues down 78%, expenses down 64.5%. This is primarily due to the five points grant that was received. So that is a big one there. Other than that, the fund really hasn't, and primarily due to the five points grant, but we also had the kayak launch that we had grant reimbursement money from. So that's why it was significantly more this year versus next year. I don't believe those are true numbers, but there is, looking at the numbers, that's the decreases there. Other than that, the two items are two park mowers, and then the flare mower attachment. What that is, is that attaches to our Mini Baco, allows for us to get the tree line along the roads and the bike trails to get the brush knocked back.
Our live feed is out.
Yeah, it's not working. I've been looking for a while.
It's being worked on.
Do I need to restart?
Yes, you need to restart.
You've got 45 seconds to recap.
All righty. Moving on to the stormwater utility fund. Revenues are up 35%, primarily due to the garbage collections. If you remove the garbage collections, it's up about 10%. 10% reflects the increase to the collections. The rate study recommended, excuse me, without collections, it is still 10%. Got ahead of myself. Expenses are up 65%, which is entirely, pretty much entirely tied to the garbage contract. And then we have capital outlay items. We have the Garfield Avenue Junction box, Chamber Drive catch basin, and the Mill in Cleveland extension, which is what we've discussed previously.
And the garbage contract is up?
Well, correct, it's this year, excuse me, '26. It'll be, I think it's July of '26. Based off the conversations I've had, we bid our contract after COVID, so we don't expect a tremendous increase. Some of these other municipalities bid it during COVID, and they've had a huge hike. So fingers crossed. But that will be, I'm pretty sure it's July of '26. And that's through the center of local government. So that also helps with us spreading the cost. All righty, cemetery fund. Revenue's down 6%, primarily tied to the general fund transfer that is down 6.7%. The cemetery is something that, of course, is variable in terms of the revenues. Although we like seeing high revenues, it's also a sad thing when we see high revenues. So we've tried to be somewhat conservative on that. We left about a $7,800 difference when comparing revenues versus expenses. The expenses are down 4.4% when comparing '25 to '26. Not on the project list and not funded is that columbarium. So that could be added. It's not a necessity at this point. We are running out of space, but it's not a necessity at this point. So I know this is a discussion we had, I believe, the first budget workshop, in determining whether or not we wanted to do that. I think that's something that we need to do in the very near future. I just, this is not something that I am recommending we do next year. All righty, moving on to wastewater. Revenues are up 24.6%, and that includes a 15% increase on collections. The other one that I'll throw out there, and 15%, let me go back to that. 15% is the recommendation when transferring the 500,000 to both wastewater and water. That was, when the scenario was run, that is what was needed to make that five-year escalator work, mitigate the impact to the residents, but still ensure that we're sustainable within that fund. So that can be increased or decreased. I would significantly advocate for the 15%, though, which I can, is very minimal on a month-to-month basis, but I understand the impact that makes to residents within the city. So that includes a 15% increase on collections. Also point out that almost 14,000, if you recall, not this year, but the previous years, we had both water capital and water operating, as well as wastewater operating, wastewater capital. We have consolidated, we consolidated those funds earlier this year. So all revenues were going to the operating accounts for water and wastewater. So you'll notice, some of the expenses are up solely because we're now in one fund versus two funds. This is tab eight. The general fund transfer is up 40%. It's needed to get that fund to where it needs to be. I mean, we're going to have to continue to do that for the next couple of years to ensure that we have enough in the reserve account to be sustainable within that fund. Within the capital outlay, we have about 102,000 in wastewater projects. There's more within that line item. And why there's more in that line item is at 150. That was what was part of the rate study. So of course, things come up, whether we like it or not. So we do have some money built in for that. But if we don't spend it, then of course, that would fall back into the reserve balance. And I will point out, compared to the last time we went over this budget, I did drag down the formula to include the debt payment. So you'll notice there's a difference if you compared the last one to this one, and that was because I didn't drag it down far enough. So my apologies. Any questions on that one? All righty, going to the water account, or water department, rather. Revenues are down 20.5%, or they're up 6% without the settlement money. So as a friendly reminder, we receive PFOS money through the PFOS settlements. To date, we've received about 721,000. We expect to receive, I think it'll be more than 100,000. We think it's going to be closer to 200,000. However, we are budgeting 100, just to be conservative on that. That's something that we have built into next year is completing a study to address the PFOS issues. We are less in some of the surrounding communities, however, we're still about two times the limit. So we have until 2030 to complete those issues. Loveland had about a $1.2 million upgrade to their plant. I think they're like four or six times the limit. So hopefully, ours won't be as extensive. But we need to complete that study to ensure that we know what needs to be done to address those issues. Then the general fund transfer, that did increase about 4%. I'll emphasize, once again, the water and the wastewater transfers come solely from the water tower improvement fund. That was the money that we utilized to pay the water tower grant. So as we were receiving the invoices, we cash flowed it. We're no longer doing that. So we just transfer out of that to water and wastewater. And then I put the projects for the water department. Fortunately, that did not fit in one box, but we've got several projects to tackle next year. Any questions on that? All righty, customer service initiatives. This is one of the things that I have, I believe I've communicated to council, I've taken a different stance on this. I originally was looking to hire a chief information officer. Based off of the feedback I'm getting from the residents, do you have anything in your?
What tab is this?
It should be 10.
We've got the cover slide that says this, and then there's nothing behind it.
Yeah. So I still need approval on my initiatives. So that's why I needed to, yeah.
So it's not there. It's not me.
So there's a few different angles we're taking at this. We've engaged with a new marketing company that the feedback I've received is tremendous. They've done a good job. And I think that the track we're on is exactly what I need out of that department. We look to continue that relationship moving into next year. As I mentioned previously, I originally wanted to hire a chief information officer. What I prefer to do at this point, from a cost-saving standpoint, is I'd prefer to hire someone part-time. It would be up to probably 29 hours a week. And what that person would do is, they would work the customer service station, as well as tackle the events, and would be essentially an office manager for us. Customer service is extremely important to us, but it's also very time-consuming. So being able to have someone that is dedicated to that, to ensure that we're delivering on customer service, I believe is in our best interest. We also have a lot of events that is going to require time, and we don't have capacity internally to address those. So though you're not voting on anything related to this, that is my angle going into next year, and I feel very strongly about that. Moving into following years, I might improve or expand on that. But moving into the next year, that is something that, based off the feedback I've received from council, from a cost standpoint, as well as how we've been able to craft our operations currently, that I think will be sustainable for the next year. That's what I believe will be the best option.
Is there a line item somewhere for that, whatever that salary, or whatever that projection is?
Correct. It's built into the manager budget. Yep. And once again, it's up to 29 hours. I want the particular person to be at the customer service station during the core, you know, core hours of the day. However, we've got items like the farmer's market that requires time on the weekends. So I would expect for, you know, them to be able to work those hours built into that 29 hours. And that's, you know, a couple of months a year, but still is, I believe, needed. And then firing EMS funds, this has remained unchanged. Revenues are up 3.18%. Expenses are down 30%. A lot of that has to do with, this really doesn't affect, we have a contract, but in terms of the fund itself, we have that opioid earmark. So you'll look at the reserve balance, it's about 470,000. That will increase, we have earmarked 85,000. So if you, really, you can add 85,000 to that 470, unless the ambulances deliver next year and we pay for it. That'll just continue to roll back into the reserve balance. But we wanted to earmark that per council's direction on the ordinance to help pay for that ambulance. But the contract remains the same at $3 million. All right. As a conclusion, similar to the last budget discussion, all of the, what I would consider secondary funds are provided. There should be 12 of them on tab four. That is the local law enforcement trust fund, the drug enforcement fund, mayor's court computer fund, the Garfield TIF, state highway improvement fund. A lot of those funds, it's very specific uses. We don't have a, any of them have a true plan, other than the regular expenses taken out of those funds. I don't believe those are core funds, which is why I put those towards the end. those towards the end. I can answer any questions on those. They're all pretty straightforward. The only thing that I'll highlight is we have at the very last, or third from the last, is Fund 225, which is Cemetery Closure and Maintenance Fund. As we believe we're about a 92% occupancy within the cemetery. We're going to, of course, eventually run out of revenues related to the cemetery, and the expenses are not going to run out or slow down. So that's something that we will have to monitor moving ahead. We need to bid out our mowing. The current company is, they've already sort of floated a number out that is less than what they're paying, or what it costs us now. So that's a good sign. But that's, one of our biggest expenses is mowing and the maintenance of the cemetery. The Cemetery Closure and Maintenance Fund, that's something that council, through a ordinance, is able to tap into. It's a very miniscule amount, but we can essentially take the interest from that fund and utilize that to pay for some of the operating costs. Once again, that is an ordinance, and there's, I'm not recommending that now, but that's something that we need to monitor as we're running out of space within the cemetery itself. Columbariums are one thing, but in terms of the actual lots, we're at about 92% occupancy. And then just as a conclusion, the general fund, once again, is down 0.6% of revenues, down 19.6 in expenses. Income taxes up 1.1%. And then the three noticeable differences, City Hall debt dropped off. We've got to evaluate the rate increases, and then we move the garbage subsidy from the general fund to the stormwater fund. I'm not sure this presentation, I hope this presentation started before I started talking. We're at 57 minutes. So that is all I have unless there's any questions.
Nobody else has any questions? I would recommend that the law director draft an ordinance accounting for appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Milford during the fiscal year ending in December 31, 2026.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
No.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right. Do you want to discuss the rates?
Thank you. Alrighty, second on the list is the rate study. Provided in the packet is several items. We've got the actual rate study itself that was originally completed. We've got the scenario rant that was run for the $500,000 to be transferred, or, excuse me, we had a scenario run. So we had the original proposal. We had an additional $500,000 transfer, and then we had an additional $1 million transfer. That was simply to evaluate the options, see how that affected the rates, and then go from there. Provided in the ordinance, or excuse me, in the packet itself, the very first document is my recommendation for the rate increases, which aligns with the budget that was presented to council. You'll see water, wastewater, stormwater, and garbage rates. Now, I want to discuss that a little bit further. We have, to some extent, certainly far more than stormwater and garbage, discussed water and wastewater. This is something that I believe is absolutely essential due to the condition of those funds. We've discussed large transfers out of the general fund to help keep the water and wastewater budgets alive. But we are, we've ate down a large bit of money, and it's not sustainable. It hasn't been sustainable. So I think it's absolutely imperative that we increase those rates. Looking at the stormwater and the garbage rates, when looking at the rate study, stormwater was recommended a 3% increase, which is what was reflected in the recommended changes. Looking at the garbage rates, I have built in a 10% increase. If you look at the original rate study, they recommended a 20% increase. These are two items that we haven't necessarily discussed. I know that making rate increases is a tough decision, and it impacts the community. But we are to the point in which we need to, if we subsidize the trash, for example, $300,000 already, when we bid out that next contract, I'm afraid what that number is going to be. So if it's not sustainable now under the current contract, and it's quite frankly, not even close, I worry what the next contract is. Now, I will say I've heard council and their opinions on the trash, and I understand where some people fall, and that's fine. But that is my recommendation. So I wanted to be able to present this to council, A, because this drastically affects the budget. I mean, that's certainly the biggest thing. But two, I understand that this is a tough decision, and we need to make a decision as, once again, this affects the budget entirely.
Well, I'll make a very clear why I voted no to move the budget, because I think we needed to have this discussion first. Is this definitely affects the budget. So I couldn't in good conscience vote for that budget, knowing that we were going to have this conversation. With that being said, it has always been my take and my understanding that the residents get, as part of their service or whatever, garbage collection. Now, you use the word subsidize. I don't think we subsidize anything. I think we use the money that we receive from our residents to provide garbage pickup. Now, over the years, we have increased that. Now, that was a hard sell. That was, that's something we had never done. So I take exception when we talk about subsidizing. I believe we are providing a service to our residents for the money that we collect from them, is the way I've always looked at garbage collection.
I mean, I've always thought we subsidize it as part of that, their 1%.
Correct.
But still, we subsidize. I mean, we're still way cheaper than other municipalities. And he's talking about a $1.50 raise, which would be 75 cents a month. I mean, I think that's reasonable. It hasn't gone up in 20 years.
Can you explain to me on this sheet what the term outside city means?
Yeah, so anyone that gets water, for example, that is not currently a Milford resident, then pays that outside rate. So if they're not, for example, annexed into the city, then they'll pay the outside rate.
But if they are annexed, say, up off of, again, 131, because that's where I live, and I know our water comes wholesale from the township, which is a whole different.
From the county, not the township.
County.
Yeah.
It's not Milford water, was my point. I just wanted to make sure that they would apply it there, too. So thank you. But also, to your point, yes, we do subsidize, because again, we're, the city from tax money is paying out more than the residents are for this service, right? So we are subsidizing it, whether you want to call it that or not. $1.50 for some people is going to be easier than others. I mean, I hate to say it that way.
That's every two months, actually. 75 cents a month.
75 cents.
I hear you.
I think that's, has to be doable.
True.
If we don't raise rates, then we're going to have to cut other services.
It would be a lot more.
It would have to be more raised.
Our residents had to go out and contract on their own.
Oh, absolutely. But that, again, that is one of the reasons I think people live in this community, they pay their 1%, and they get services. And that was always one of the services that they received. Over the years, we have had to ask for more money. I understand that. But I'm just saying, I believe that our residents already pay it, is my point. So that's the way I look at it.
I feel like if we cut this, we've got to raise something else.
I also, yeah, I'm sorry.
1% 20 years ago covered a lot more than 1% now.
Yeah, that's.
Right. We can't keep it at this pace because the expense is going to go up, right? So like, yes, we're going to have to either pitch in more now. This hasn't been done in what, 20 years, rates have not been raised?
Yeah.
Not tremendously, not all of them.
Yeah, we've raised them.
The trash, the trash was actually raised in 2016, I believe, or 2015. But that's, and I hear council on this, and that was the whole reason why, instead of going with the 20%, with the 10%, I understand that this, you know, is considered a core offering. But at the same time, what is our breaking point? And at some point, we have to fix something. And maybe it's not this, and that's fine. But I need to know where. Because $300,000 now, next contract, I don't know what that is. And I want to throw it out there because I don't know what it is. But it still stands. If this was taken out of the general fund, I mean, we would have significantly less dollars to do projects. That's for sure. We would. I mean, it's, if it was still in the general fund.
Well, and all of these things are services that we're offering, right? I mean, we just, we were all like, kudos to our public service department for the amazing street job they did this morning, or the parks. That's all services that 1% goes to, right? And so I think we have to keep up. I mean, and we're not voting on anything that we're not ourselves paying for.
Oh, absolutely. It affects all of us.
It affects all of us.
I'm just sharing how I fundamentally have always looked at that, so.
Anybody have any other questions? Because at this point, I would make a recommendation that the law director draft an ordinance directing the city manager, and I'm not doing this lightly for those folks out there, we've talked about this a lot, but to adjust certain rates for the water, sewer, stormwater, and trash utilities and amending the codified ordinances to reflect such adjustments.
Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
No.
Mr. Parrish?
Unfortunately, yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Right, Mr. Henderson, that's all you have?
Yes.
All right. So that takes us to public comments as part of committee of the whole. Does anybody from the public want to make a comment about either the budget or the rate increase? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn from committee of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, that takes us back then to new business, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Pacheco for ordinances and resolutions.
Excuse me, thank you, ma'am. 令令25-415, an ordinance to make appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Milford during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2026. Now therefore, be ordained by the Council of Municipalities of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The Council of the City of Milford hereby sets aside and appropriates for and during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2026, the sum set forth in the attachment here, too, identified as permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2026. The full text of the amendments is set forth in the attached document and fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter, set appropriations total $20,84,253, well, 84, $253,088. Section 2, under and in accordance with Sections 11.05 and 12.05 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance requires only one reading and shall become effective upon its passage by city council.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
令令25-416, an ordinance directing the city manager to adjust certain rates for the water, sewer, stormwater, and trash utilities and amending the codified ordinances to reflect such adjustments. Whereas the City of Milford partnered with Raftalus to conduct a rate study for all City of Milford utilities, including water, sewer, trash, and stormwater. Whereas per the recommendations of Raftalus, the Council of the City of Milford has deemed it necessary to make needed changes to utility rates within the City of Milford to obtain fiscal responsibility and to further promote sustainability within the utility funds. Now therefore, being resolved by the Council of the City of Milford, that, Section 1, this ordinance shall be amended, sorry, this ordinance shall amend Sections 923.01, 927.02, 929.04 of the Milford Codified Ordances, and Order 16-1241 to reflect the changes as shown in the attached exhibit. Section 2, the proposed changes shall take effect during the first utility billing cycle in fiscal year 2026. Section 3, the ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from its passage and approval.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
令令25-416, an ordinance directing the city manager to adjust certain rates for the water, sewer, stormwater, and trash utilities and amending the codified ordinances to reflect such adjustments.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
No.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Old business. I just want to remind everybody that our next meeting is the last meeting before Christmas. So maybe break out your best ugly Christmas sweater, Christmas attire.
Looks like people have already taken some of that direction already tonight, ma'am.
What?
Right here. I've done it.
All right.
All right. So I would make a motion pursuant to, and in accordance with Section 3.051 of the Milford City Charter, entered into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual, unless the public employee, official, or licensee, or I'm sorry, employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
And we will be returning from executive session only to adjourn the meeting. Just to let you know that. So thank you all for coming. If you guys need anything signed or a picture or anything for having credit for being here, you can come up and get it. You get it? All right. All right, you're welcome.